Okay, I'm going to call to order the monthly. What do we call it? Board meeting? Of the White Lake trustees? On Wednesday, the twenty-third of April at six fifty. Twenty-fourth April. At six fifty. Right, so. Pledge your.
Pledge of marriage.
Pledge of marriage.
Okay, so. Do the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
If Rich can't show.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance and particularity to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Karen, it's.
Your call. Yep. President Jennifer Schultz here. Vice President Richard McLeew is not here yet.
Not here yet.
Secretary Karen Wines is here, trustee Eric Shotwell.
Here.
And trustee Carrie Francis.
Here.
And treasurer Wendellin Oofen is absent excuse. We also have director April Stevenson and assistant director Amy Rosen in.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. So you have three.
Three yes votes, yes, thank you.
We have no public today. We have no presentations today. Can I get a motion on approving the minutes?
Don't give the minutes as written.
All in favor?
Other than I.
Okay. I do not have. A report. And I'm guessing Rich doesn't either, since he's not here.
I have no report.
Okay. Then I would like to present the bills to be paid. As they're submitted. There's no need to move money, there's nothing coming up on CDs. And so all we have to do this month is pay our bills. Is there any question on these here?
All we wanted to say was that although this doesn't reflect it right now, part of the state aid has come in. Just over fifteen thousand.
Nice.
The first.
Alright.
Well, in that case, I'll make the motion to accept the bills for payment as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're flying here.
Here we are.
It's your, it's your turn, April, with the director's report.
So Amy and Emily and I had the privilege of going to the PLA conference. Beginning of April, which was wonderful, had, really feel like a librarian again. We went to some, some great sessions. Got to see a lot of vendors. And to help us find apps and lockers. And then shared with building committee. And so we're excited about some of that coming out, as well as some future things, some future ideas maybe for the youth department. But lots of, lots of interesting information and fun stuff, so good views, nice and close. Weather was so sober. I hosted a volunteer appreciation event, so it'll be an annual event. I can't say whether it will be a breakfast each time, but there will be some sort of weekly event. So that was fun. Circulation is, we unfortunately had a clerk resign. They left for a different full-time position, not in the library world. And so one of our pages was already being trained as a clerk. And so we were able to move her to that position, which is great. She, she's actually a local resident, local with kids. So that was nice that we have some local working for us. And then we're going to be filling her page position. Statistics are looking good. Overall. The, and you'll see later on in statistics that the. Amy's letter, we're getting some good signups for that and some good openings. It's a little more opening. That's your life. Yay. I love to think it's all the fun stuff we put in there, but I don't know. Tractor connections, attended a lot of meetings. It's kind of funny to look at your Google Calendar where they color code. They'll tell you like how much time is spent in different activities. But still you get good information, so T L N stuff, S A S on. Of course, our friends that sat forward and their quarter meeting that they had, and they're planning for their mystery dinner together, so I was in on some of that. Attended with Amy, we went, attended the Highland White Lake Business Association coffee at the township. And of course, really didn't do any webinars this month, because kind of PLA kind of took care of all of that. Normal staff committee meetings and board committees. Finance committee was postponed, that will be next week. Facilities, just your normal day-to-day stuff going on in there. We did get our friend new trash receptacles for each patio, one for each patio. They matched the patio furniture. Friends patio table donation signage was installed on there, so now everyone can see that the friends gave us those patio tables. Just some normal stuff, we got, we're opened up for spring and summer now with our patio umbrellas and started things looking bright and cheery along with our spring cleanup. They've been out there getting, you know, cutting the beds, edging, getting the molds out there. And the, we, this week, we're getting the, the Trexus, I believe, almost back installed onto the garbage area. And the ADA bower is installed and looking.
Oh, I even touched it coming in, I thought, I better chow.
Yep, it took a little bit, a little bit of doing, there was some tricky stuff, but they, they, they got it, so yay.
Did we look into if it was covered under warranty? Before we did all that, or was it more like an act of nature that caused those hinges to break?
That was an act of nature.
Okay, because I was wondering if, if we had looked into that.
That was completely the win, that was that, when that, when the storm came through.
Yeah.
And it's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the friends are opening up their friends wall to artists outside of the, well, the White Lake Township area. Just to kind of get some more, get some more people in there. They are busy with their publicity committee, working on new summer reading handouts and bookmarks. And new poster for the, for your display sign, as well as yard signs. So a real cool thing to do for, just for library, for summer reading and/or in this case. Something that shows your support for the library in general, so therefore working on design signs for those together. They also have their ticket sales to be done for their four spring raffle baskets. These are fantastic baskets. I mean, there's a lot that these local businesses are giving to them. And so I, I would definitely get, get into that, because it's really good stuff. And their additional program tables have arrived and are out there in the building. So that's all set. We are received, we've received. Ten four K Blu-rays for, for a collection from a local resident. They are continuing to plan to donate in the future, as well as twelve gold finishing bowls. From the Jane for a chosen, and you want to follow up on that one?
I had noticed that, or we had lent out one of our Freedom McBeth. Books through the mail system, and they're always checked out, because you know, she's a TikTok. And the book came back through the mail system and said, we, our patron told us this is not by her, somebody ripped off her name. Published a book under her name. We thought when it came in, it had a very different problem, but we figured maybe it was her first self-published book. So I looked up, I tried anything for one little sentence on the internet on somebody else's page, not on a publisher page. So I contacted her, she went on to the book page, and I contacted her publisher. And they were like, and I kind of looked around, without a state of Michigan, nobody else owned the book. So they commented, and guess her name was stolen, somebody published books. And they present books under her name, as like a self-published book. And they thanked me very much, they had thought they had bought them all, because I had bought it from Amy Row, one of our regular vendors. But when I went back, their page was gone. It was gone off Amazon. It's still fine, it was mentioned, but no way to buy it. And I couldn't find it anywhere, so they said, thank you, they thanked you for checking with State. We would like to thank you for, I said, should I delete it? I don't want to delete it, it really is from, because it is published, so we understand budgets, we'd like to pick you up, collect the books. And they, if someone else would like to the library, we'll continue to send you any, any ones for your collection at any time that you want, so.
Nice.
Very nice.
So yeah, so they were very thankful, and they did a whole scan of the whole US through the WorldCat system. They found one of the library that had business, so it had gotten out there and just those early people that just had to catch up before it was pulled off. So they were very thankful, and that they asked me about how to libraries make selections, we have kind of dialogue still.
And then was the book destroyed?
I still haven't, I was waiting to hear if they wanted it or not, but it's totally out of system.
Okay.
The library network has deleted the whole record.
Okay, good.
Because I also wanted to know if somebody else somehow got a copy of it. But until I hear from them one way or the other, I don't want to destroy it, just in case they want.
Or cease and desist letter or something, yeah.
Yeah, so it's on my shelf. Yeah, so they don't.
That's nice.
So Amy and Emily attended the Library of Michigan informational webinar applying for the L S T A grant, so they're working. Staff are also working on a neighbor cafe, we had a request for a program we did quite a while, a bit called the Repair Cafe. I'm sure you, you remember that.
Yeah.
So this would be similar. Kind of work with our volunteers to see, you know, who does what, and how we can build something like that. Fall programming is, is in, this is comparative, planning for. We're going to have a possible author's fair for next summer. And tiger tickets for adult summer reading of prizes. Photo booth is going well, and we now have phone chargers available for patrons in-house use. So they can check out. Yeah. And the day of the eclipse. I do want to say this, staff yielded over five hundred phone calls from ten to three.
Were they people looking for glasses?
Yes.
Same thing at Joanne's.
Yes.
Do you have glasses for the eclipse? I said, isn't that later today? And she goes, yeah, but we didn't get any, I said, well, no, we don't.
We tried to come for the library event, and there were so many people here, that was really, really exciting to see. But we also came because we thought we had to attend the event to get glasses, my mistake, so we didn't have glasses either. We went to tractor supply even, and she said she had twelve thousand pair, and they were sold out.
Oh. I bought glasses.
Impressive. Anyway, all those folks.
And everyone Google searched the next day, all across the country, was why do my eyes hurt?
Oh, that's wild.
Says a lot.
Well, even with the glasses, you were not supposed to be continually looking at the sun.
Our rage room was a huge success, a big thank you to the fire department for partnering with us on that one. If you're not aware of what that is, or what it was that we did, back at the, when we had the strategic planning going on, and we had the team focus group. One of the things that was asked for was a rage room. And so we were able to work with the fire department, they had, you know, a spare car. Kids were able to get dressed up with hard hats and, and sledgehammers and stuff. And they were able to bang on the car and break glass and.
Eliminate their rage.
Yeah. So that is really exciting. Lots of good stuff going on with the collection, our steam kits are getting ready to launch, great Candyland program, giant Candyland, huge, really super cute. A D T will be out in May to install those bombs.
Good.
A few newbies are celebrating one year, so Bate and Mary Lou and Nancy, congratulations. And our new program is on. So.
But, and I wanted to make a note here for the record too, that circulation, according to the chart here, is the highest it's ever been. And overdrive use is also, and even new card registration is fifth of all the months that we track, so.
And March was the bulk sale, so I think that may have popped.
Yeah, door count, door count way up.
Bring in a lot of traffic.
So fantastic, that's great. Yeah, even overdriving in the record.
Joke. Committee reports. For the finance committee, I would just say that. Yeah, it's because we didn't have anything coming due. And so. This is as usual.
Yeah.
I see the strategic planning update.
Not so. I'm sorry, what did you say about finance? We didn't meet this month?
Okay, thank you.
Because we didn't have anything to discuss.
Thank you.
So with this, with the strategic plan, like change with this one, I did add in a grant suggestion of the, the date in front of. Each new item added, and then I just pulled out to see what you thought of this view of this is by the month. So this is just showing you what occurred in April for the most part, unless there was something at the end of March that would say, right, there is one that's a March. And that was because it was rate. Even the day of, or right after the board meeting. But otherwise, this, I removed and kind of separated out all the months. I still have the one that has everything. But let me know what you think of this view, each month does more than ever happen. Is this something that you're interested in, so you don't have a huge thing you're looking through, and you're just seeing the new stuff? Or? Just let me know, so I'm happy to make adjustments. It's not a real issue.
So next meeting, if there's anything that happens on these items that are red here. Do these old comments stay in, or do they get hidden?
So they stand in master one. So the master one, I have all of that.
So you just roll it up and do a new one for the.
So I just basically, I probably paste and just put in, like, next one, I would do May. If that's a two, if that's the view that you want to look at. If not, I could do like, I could leave one month back and have the current month, it's really, whatever you're wanting to see.
Sometimes I like to see all of it, just because it highlights, hey guys, you're not moving forward, you're just helping a place.
But wouldn't that be in the master one? Is that what the master one is?
The master one. Yeah, but I'll see it.
Yeah. So it's up to you, if you want me to keep giving you the master one, I'm happy to do that. It's just going to keep getting longer and longer.
I, I don't mind getting that, but if you want to just give one to the president? And just give it, if anybody else just wants a summary.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
It might make sense to have the last comment, which, leave the last comment, so you have a.
So you know the last time you worked on?
The last time there was, you know, and then. Right now, it is four pages, with just the, the current.
Well, I understand.
And, yeah. If we left the last comment, it would stay about the same size.
And you would at least know what, like. Let's see, is everything that has a one hundred comments? Just about. Yeah. You can, I mean, I would just put a whole one for me and just leave, just leave the comment until something fixes it, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was.
We can see with the last comment.
Yeah.
You know, and is this field for start date and deadline, is that a date field for the? Format of the entry? Or did? Does it force it to a date, date?
I can check, what would you?
Well, I was liking, like, for things that are year two. And three, like, if we knew we wanted to start that in the fall, or something like that. It would help us with budgeting.
Oh.
You know, I don't mean, like, it has to be nine to twenty twenty-five, but fall of twenty twenty-five.
You mean, instead of it just saying January first for all?
Or no, these all just saying, these all that are blank.
Right, but those are the second, third year, but for the ones for the first year, they're all saying the first of the year.
Oh.
So actually, I.
Oh, no, that one changed.
If it affects the budget, and it's year one, if it affects next year's, but so as an example, that's going to be your lockers. So like the browsing collection outside of normal hours and whole pickups, which are whole locker based. That's this year, because it's got, and that's got to be done.
Where is that? Page, you're looking at two?
That's page two, yeah, in fact, actually, the whole pickup is the major one, and that one I've got them in July. Because in time for me to consider it for budget.
I got you. But it might be, it's year two?
That would be budget, that's currently year one right now, so. The next one, what we would do with this one is this, we would put in here. We would probably come up with an additional. Tactic. For twenty twenty-five, that would talk about the implementation of the lockers. So like, we would.
Year two.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. But we could probably talk about that at the June meeting and assess what, how this is going.
Alright, I mean, I can understand you need the information to make the budget. Which is why it's in year one, but the implementation's in year two. Do you have a separate line for that?
Not yet, that's what, that's what I'm saying, we're going to have to talk about that.
Okay.
Kind of figure out.
I got you. Anything else on strategic planning? I don't think we're meeting till June.
That's right, yeah.
Is that right? So that gives us, do you want to do these policies? Under new business? Because policy committee is next. Or do you want to do them, where do you want to do them?
I think we've got a list of new business, right?
Yeah. So there's nothing else from the policy committee?
No, just a, a three notes that we're going to review tonight. The committee reviewed the second draft of the medium policy, and it's in the packet of the board here for review. We're recommending it, we also reviewed the laser engraver policy, recommending that. But the third one that we were working on and talking about was the P T O policy, we're going to have one singular P T O policy. And we're going to wait until the litigation, the Michigan Supreme Court is done.
Okay.
Before we make a move on that, because we don't want to do anything that's going to run afoul of the ball.
Right. Are we doing like P T O and sick time together?
Yes, that's the thought.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Alrighty.
But we're waiting to.
Okay.
Be back from Michigan Supreme Court before we.
Okay.
Advising further on that.
Alright, Carrie, do you want to share anything on building committee?
I have quite a bit to share.
Okay.
The committee, oh, no, I'm sorry, she said she's going to listen, I still take notes right now. The committee reviewed, reviewed information on after-hours hold lock of vendors, and between now and our next meeting, we are tasked with reviewing the locker binder. So that's going around.
That's going around, I have.
All of the building, you have it right? And then you get it after June? Sure, okay, and then I'll get it from you. We also reviewed images from PLA of wall-mounted early literacy manipulatives, which were really.
Those are.
Quite exciting, really neat to see. We reviewed several examples of spreadsheets that assess major building components lifespan, condition, and cost, so we can get a handle on upcoming big ticket items, if you will. And we also will review and decide what, what information should be included to build on for the future. We decided to put the generator idea on hold, and then perhaps revisit it when the township gets their building in, because they likely will have a generator, and perhaps we can partner one way or another. And then we reviewed information from a company that installs acoustic tiles, and this is for the IDLAM. And the company that installed the original acoustic squail in the mix is out of business. But we have the names of two other vendors, and we'll be looking to them. April is going to be setting up presentations with those three vendors, in fact, I forgot about that piece, sorry, for our committee. April is going to look into a quote for fixing bathroom tile, and this will involve removing the wood border, replacing it with wood that exactly matches what's there now. And leaving out the top of the tile, right?
Leveling.
Leveling, yeah. Is he gonna like?
Oh, leveling, sorry.
Take the, take the wood trim, and at the bottom do a notch, so that covers, is that what he's doing? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Saying, yeah, in fact, that quote should come through any day now.
Okay, good.
And that was my next update. And then Jen and April will meet with our sign company to get a design for the building dedication plaque.
We did that yesterday, was it yesterday?
Yeah.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, so that's looking good, we're, it's pretty nice. Same with the John nursery.
Yes.
So.
Right.
Do you guys all want to see it before? If the timing works well, we'll be approving. Drafts and art ready to print before the next meeting. If things go like they typically do, we may be able to show you before the next meeting. But if we get it ready before the next meeting, do you all want to know it and just look at it in like April's office? Do you want us to send a text out to everybody? I just didn't know how vested you were in looking at it before.
I'd like to look before, I think, but yeah, if you just let us know, when it's in April's office.
Yeah.
Just stop in.
Okay. So if you don't hear, if you don't hear from us, it didn't make it.
Got it.
So, but yeah, you guys want to see? I, you know, yeah, that sounds good. It's a, it's, do you remember the tree that had like the books that make the tree? And we put some of the leaves and, and birds hand-blown glass pieces to tie in with the other donor stuff? That's going to be on the, out there, you've seen it, but it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been, yeah.
And then we're going to take one of, a picture of one of those leaves and kind of put all of the writing on top of it. So it'll be on a clear acrylic, and then you'll see this picture of the leaf, and then you'll have all the names. So it'll tie in with.
Oh, that's nice.
The leaves on the, on the rooms that are sponsored, and stuff like that.
Nice.
That's hilarious.
So, yeah, okay. That is the last committee report. Thank you, Carrie. Eric, are you leading this discussion on the?
I certainly am.
On the policies we're looking at?
In your packet, you've got, let's take a look at the laser engraver policy. Basically, we specified what it can't be used and what it can be used for, the first part. So basically, anything that's obscene, unsafe, harmful, dangerous, illegal, otherwise prohibited, that's all in there. And then also, everything that goes through the laser engraver is subject to April's review for a designated purse. So that way, we can refuse any requests that might come in, that was one of the things that came up in the. In the conversation that we had as, as a committee was, whatever, if someone asks for something, and the answer is that it's all going to flow through April, or designated April, to refuse anything that's requested. So, and also that includes if we have to stop things because it's too long a project, or it's not going to be completed by the end of business hours or anything.
So we are, we the library are doing, running the machines. Okay, customers or our patrons are not running.
Yeah, they won't have any hands on it, that's the.
This is very similar to the three D printer.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just redone for the laser engraver.
Yeah. So, that's that one. I don't know if we need to vote on it.
Well, can we discuss maybe? My, my read of it was, was, we're. Somewhat redoing the, the three D printer. And having multiple and, and you know, assumably over the next fifteen years, we'll. Have something else um, there and also thinking like printing is a similar type of thing. You know, so um. There and it. Does it make sense to have a policy for each? Type of output device or creation device? Um, or does it makes more sense to say, wait a minute, we have these devices that we. Use to produce. Outputs that, you know, patrons have some level of access uh, to uh, and. Shared with the, the library staff and.
So I thought that what? That this number two. Special services and special collections. Want, I mean, this one says two K, so we've probably got a, a one somewhere.
Yeah, so the three.
So that's like the three D printer, so they're all in the same policy?
Right.
But they each get a different letter. So that's what I thought it was.
I think at this point, we need to have them separate. Um, there's just enough difference between each of the equipment that if you tried to make it all encompassing, then. In a couple of months, a new piece comes in and then we have to rewrite everything as opposed to just adding in for each type of. Cause if we do this and try and make this and the three D printer one thing. Then next month, when we got the poster printer ready to go, this is obsolete.
Will all the poster printer be like three?
Right, no, that's why I'm saying they should each be different as opposed to one that just says.
But they're all under the same.
Right, but he was asking for it to be one.
So like um.
One, one instead of one.
I understand that, that's why I say that's one, each one has its own page.
But what, like, where would we have a um. Where would we imagine having um, a permission that we would permit? Uh, to create materials that are um, that are prohibited by state. Local and lo- you know, laws are unsafe or obscene or violation of intellectual, so that, that whole.
Had that, had that at the beginning of that whole policy before you start breaking out?
Those things that, there are many things I think that are. You know, abroad, or if, if you're using one of our devices to produce something, then it. Can't be intended for commercial use, you know, that, that A through E there. And the um, the library director also would have. Or designate me, deserves the right to refuse any request or.
I mean, Eric, in those, is there any part of this that's also in the three D?
They, they do overlap, so I, I don't, I, I, I see Richard's point.
Maybe we could like pull it to the front.
Policy upfront with specifics to, specific small sections to things like the three D printer.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, obviously the three D printer, you can create things that should not be used for food, right? But the laser engraver doesn't have that kind of stipulation, so, so they do differ in some ways. But I could see consolidating mo- most of those things under one clause at the beginning.
Yeah, that's.
Separate paragraphs that apply specifically to that unit or whatever might be below that.
Yeah.
I do, yeah, I agree because I did, they did cross my mind, but then I thought, well, maybe this will just be, maybe this would be easier. But I do say, see what you're saying, Rich.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, over the next twenty years, we're, we're probably, we, we won't have a laser engraver, but we'll have a plasma engraver. You know, and, and uh.
And we're still not making anything for commercials.
We're still like, yeah, we're doing, you know, we're not allowing obscene things and.
So I, it doesn't look like we're charging for any of this work, right? We're doing it as a service?
These are agree, but you bring in your own, so there's really not.
A, a, a reason to do that.
There's not really.
The electricity is all really big for it.
Yeah, okay.
So I can come back, I, we're not, this hasn't been deployed yet, right now, we're still in that, wanted to pass this around because. That was incredible.
Just do like your flowers for a wedding.
Figure out what um, you know, how the different things work and.
That's really pretty.
Things that are. Blasts and things like that, so um.
Once it's ready, that, those things all need to be on display to make people go, ooh.
Yeah.
But, but if somebody wanted, you know, to, to do that, like for a wedding and they wanna, you know, make twenty five of them. But, you know.
They bring all the vases in and somebody on our staff.
Well, after this meeting, we're all gonna get logo tattoos, laser engraver.
So, uh, policy committee could, I can bring something to policy committee that kind of shows it. I would, I guess at this point, I would then have to bring three D print, I'd have to relook a three D printer, kind of. Pull everything into one and then put smaller. Paragraphs as to specifically three D, is that what you're thinking, three D?
Yeah.
But just.
Yeah, if there are, yeah, if there are things that are.
Yeah, there's blanket items.
Yeah.
Individual items that are specific to the specific units.
Yeah, so perhaps um. I guess my question then would be is as this stands right here. Are there any changes? That that would help me when I go to put the two together and then I may just do the both printer at the same time. Put that in there as well, so that maybe I can come next month or.
Bring all of them?
Either next month, if I go on vacation, probably not. Um, or at least get this to policy committee as one big one. So does this look okay right now? Is there anything in this that, because I'd like to know if this is okay before I.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can certainly review like what you've got consolidated and what we can pull out specifically enough. I, if we're gonna do it that way, I, I personally think like it ought to be, it would be modular, so you could, if for some reason the laser engraver becomes obsolete. And we're not using it anymore, we can easily pull out or change the numbering or whatever. That seems to make some sense.
Well, I think also think about these things that, are they really unique to a, like a laser engray? Engraver. Like if you're, you're printing a poster and it. You can't, we can't complete the job in, in a reasonable time. You know, that would be the same, same thing with the, the three D, like, you know, so I look at these and think that these are pretty. Take out the word engraving and say, put the word producing or something like that and. It applies to, to everything.
Yeah, and just, just take out where it says like written in section D, the last line, where it says to use the laser engr, make it the device in question. Device was specifically enumerated down below.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
We should also make it quicker to do in future if we add on.
Exactly.
Hologram producer.
Yeah, and, and also not be in a position where. We allow something to be printed on a poster printer that we don't allow to be printed on a, a, a copy, on the copy printer because. You know, we transcribed it, went, didn't catch it, we just weren't thinking about the same thing at the same time.
Yeah, we're not gonna be splitting hairs over.
Exactly. Have a clear poli- clear, easy to read, easy to follow, the policy that. Is easy for us to administer as well, same rules applied to. All the, the devices and there may be some, you know, the, there might be some special rules about the swimming pool. That, you know, we don't apply to here, but.
I love how y'all are dreaming so big.
With a cloning machine.
Water slide.
Transporter.
I will, um, so then I'll bring this to policy and update it to policy committee.
And then we also looked at the library meeting room policy, we had recommended. Policy is here, it's fairly extensive, there goes. So we all subject to look at that and talk about it.
Can someone read the first sentence to me?
If I can, if you look at it first, so before I do that, the two lines there, disregard those two lines, the one above the word library and the one that looks like it's crossing out.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Yeah, let's ignore that. Okay, now, what was?
I just was having trouble with the first line and I, it just.
The primary purpose of the meeting rooms is to provide a readily available meeting place for the following entities to fulfill their.
Oh, okay, so that's still in?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's that line, just ignore that.
Okay, I gotta check it.
Um, I'll call your attention, uh, as I was going through this, um. It dawned on me that we could have people ask to rent gathering place patio. So I did put that in red to see what your thoughts on that. And I just felt like if they're going to rent that, they would also have to rent this room. Piece of anything in leather. We wouldn't want them just also just out there renting the patio without access. That wouldn't make sense.
Well, then they could rent it after hours. Yeah, that would, but renting this gives them access to the bathrooms. Unless they come in, unless we use the bypass and they come in at the main door and just have access to the bathroom.
So we ha- we have an existing library meeting rooms, uh, policy.
Yeah.
Wh- wh- what are the differences? That we, what do we have?
Oh, I assumed this was the existing one.
It's the parts of the existing.
And you were just making additions.
So this is a lot of the existing one. What we mainly changed here was allowing. For social rentals. Or it doesn't have to be a, a meeting, it could be for any.
But still no after hour.
Yes. And laws for after hours.
Hey, then I'm looking at the wrong dot.
It does give um, preference to white lake residents. But it doesn't look like the word.
And there was that section two that talked about how meetings had to be available publicly, we struck that. Because people might wanna have a private event, they don't want anybody just walking into the child birthday party.
Okay, but I thought we ran into problems with that.
No, um, I cleared that with um.
The lawyer?
Yeah, with library mission legal and our attorney. Uh, at uh, one of the directors meetings, I've asked about specifically. And we can, as just as we keep these rooms locked, um, that is, I can not be coming in here even though the room isn't being used at all. They can also be used for, uh, we don't have to allow people in if they're having some sort of social gathering. What? Um, after I attended that meeting, uh, I then heard from. Brenda over at Highland, the director at Highland, and they have just had theirs done by our attorney there, even the policy done.
Oh, okay.
And so she directed me to a specific area and I'm just trying to find the name of the site. It was. Yeah, um. But it basically stated. That. They understand the nature of the building and that, but we will not, um. I just wanna find it, those, it's very specific in what it says. We're not going to be.
We're not policing their area, keeping people out or, you know, we're not guarding the door for them kind of thing. It's their, it's their private meeting or thing, but we are not. We discussed this.
I know. Yeah, the library accepts rent in the meetings and private social events, users of the meeting rooms must understand the nature of the public setting. The library staff will not monitor or enforce exclusive use of the room. So that was specific verbiage from their uh, policy. That had been resolved.
Well, can you point out where it has hours that you can rent?
That is under meeting room reservations.
Yeah.
Uh, it's by third. Put it down. To contact, and then if you come down below that, one, two, three, four. Six gives you the. Amount and seven, oh, it's seven, meeting rooms with the exception of the garage.
It's only the garage you can do after hours?
Uh, no, they can.
Can't do the, can't do the garage sharing visit.
You can't do, yeah. All the others can be done.
Just show me where it says that, cause I don't see it, I'm feeling stupid.
Right, right below the red part.
Yeah.
The next bullet down.
Meeting rooms with the exception of the garage are available during the following library business hours.
And then the next one down below that, does advanced request meeting room reservation outside of library business hours may be accommodated at a additional cost.
Okay.
But doesn't really, we just, we don't, we're not specific about what.
Okay.
Yeah, haven't gotten that far.
Alright.
We keep it open.
Yeah.
It's there, but we're not saying all night this time.
See what people um, ask for.
Okay.
Uh, the last bullet on the third page, starting with check for admission. Uh, after the word purpose and the second, the last line, there's a parentheses there, should be a comma. If you have parentheses, start with clause and then end the clause already.
How, between purpose and the uh.
Yeah, purpose comma, EG, comma.
So no friend for that.
No friend there, yeah.
You already did it.
I should have catch that before. Normally those things jump on it, right? When I first see them.
It's on the third page, I, I don't see.
The very bottom of. Yeah, this bullet right here.
Good note, yeah. The other thing that I saw in, in looking at this again, this time, um, the third page, third bullet. Starting with media room application slash contract. It says, I, and I didn't notice this before, but third line says payment for use agreement must be received within two consistent application approval. And then, and I know, I, I have a feeling, I know what the last line is referring to, the very last sentence in that paragraph says payments due upon request. Is that payment for last minute requests? Okay, I, I think we need to tie those two sentences together.
And just as can be approved by management and is due upon request.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Make it one line.
Instead of payments, of the period payment, it's no period, I mean the word and. And no payment, so must be approved by management and is due upon request.
So upon request says, okay, then we, is a separate from the request for the room. Would it be, would it be more, would it, fit the intent to, to say that payment is due immediately?
Or when request is made? You don't wanna be. Be straightforward?
No, I wanna, I wanna be real straightforward.
Okay.
But I'm trying, you know, and uh, see, for last minute request, payment can be approved by management and payment is due, and, and is due upon request. Is. The, it, to me, it sounds like the, the payment is due, or the, is due upon request is separate request from the, from the request that, that you're making to. So, so I'm renting, I'm renting the room and you're the library. I make a request to you for the time. And then you make a request for me to pay. Versus the, upon my, upon, you know, I have to pay. Upon my, upon, you know, I have to pay with the, you know, when I make the request. If it's approved or after it's approved.
For last minute request, payment can be approved by management and is due upon. Request?
How about last minute request can be approved by management and must be paid upon approval?
How about for last minute request, payment is due when approved by management at. You made the request, you have to pay as soon as management tells you, okay.
And payment is due upon approval?
Last minute request. For last minute request, payment is due upon approval.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It solves everything.
Yeah, right, that's it. For last minute request, payment is due upon approval. I don't think you'd have to mention that managing is making the approval, that's like.
Given.
It's a given, yeah.
That's when the best payments are.
Yeah, because if there's no approval, there's no payment.
Right. Yeah, payment is due upon approval.
That also gives a little bit of wiggle room, Dave, in case someone says, hey, the last minute request, they're on the phone, I can get there and pay for it tonight. Then you're not like insisting it be paid over the phone at the moment.
Right, yeah, that gives you that.
So in terms of exclusive use of the room. We, we won't monitor it. Or force. Or set, but what, so I'm having a birthday party, somebody wanders in. What are, what are, um, what are my options?
It would be the same thing as somebody wandering into a birthday party, say at a bowling alley or anywhere else. It's up to you to say this is a private party, and then people usually just turn around, oh, didn't know that.
And that conversation did come up with the attorneys and I, between the. The decade that I spent at Nogai and speaking with uh, both Ann, Artini and Claire. I've never had someone just walk in randomly take any sort of, whether it was a party, whether it was, no matter what it was actually, it could have been. They could have been a lot of people, they, they don't go in. Uh, and the, those two had said specifically too, they have not received any sort of calls from libraries saying this is happening. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, someone would say, oh, this is a party, management could come over and say, you know, yeah, this is a party. Would you like to something to write this? Certainly, we wouldn't want it to get a situation where, well, I'm gonna go in there anyway, and we wouldn't go through the whole policy issue. And explain that as.
I don't know, I'm gonna start showing up birthday party street cake.
Maybe a goodie bag.
I've done a lot of things like with four H where we've been places and people have walked in and as soon as we've told them that it's. A four H thing, they, oh, and they leave, so I don't really think it's an issue, but once you've told somebody that this is private.
My guess is that a lot of the, at least how I'm, I'm used to, there's a lot of those types of social events are usually after hours. It's pretty rare for us to have something that way, because most of the time the library program.
And even if you considered printing out private event signs, you know, say.
Yeah.
Over the area. Just that way you can keep people out.
Yeah, see things like that.
Yeah, that, yeah, so just think that. That's a prevention.
I would imagine, any comments, questions, thoughts?
I think it's all well thought out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got the sun breaking.
I know, it's nice, I kept thinking, no, it's not gonna move this way.
I know, that's, yeah. It's not working.
Well, since we've got this mostly hammered out, that I'd like to make a motion to approve the library meeting room policy, so the three changes as amended tonight. Being the hour for the calls, the due upon approval, and a slight change to remove all the prefaces.
And the rates are part of that?
No, that's the next thing. No, that's the next one, this is the rates.
Well, I didn't know, we had to talk about it, I just wondered what he was trying to prove altogether.
Oh.
I mean, I would think the rates would be part of the policy.
Yeah, just the policy.
I thought the rates were part of the policy, so it's just a different, I got you.
So who seconded it then?
I'll second that.
Next time it's four votes.
Yeah.
Oh, remind me, I have something to say at the end.
Okay.
You're right, we haven't voted.
No, I haven't.
All in favor.
Yeah, we talked about meeting room rates and the substances separated on the agenda, but we.
We did, we did do that.
So, um, this changes that obviously we needed to clean it and so it puts it at resident and non-resident. Um, as well as the additional cost if it's after hours. And uh, I also did put in there, if they wanted the kitchen, that was gonna be an extra two, extra five dollars. But uh, just kind of looking around at um, what some other places do with renting rooms and their costs. And so that's what you're seeing here, and it's also by the hour, so that is changed to. To reflect that before we had it at two hours. And so this is by the hour.
For the kitchen, you only have that indicated for A, but not A and B? Would that be? Also, um.
I put the word kitchen there, that's for me so that I remember that.
That A has the kitchen.
They have the kitchen.
Yeah, but also. That, that's where the, the, the asterisk is on the kitchen, right?
Oh, yeah, I'll add the asterisk to the A and B, because yeah, they'll have to, that's another thing, yeah, they want the kitchen for the.
Oh, yeah, I would do A, so add the slash kitchen star out there just to keep it.
That system.
Uh, yeah, and also then it shows that there's a kitchen available.
Good catch. Is there any debate over what the word resident means? Should I say township resident?
Should we say white lake resident like we did in the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do non-residents have to hold a library card at another library? No, it could be anybody. Okay. And you just added twenty dollars for after hour?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that enough?
I think so.
So if um, we have the. So, um. The garage is only available after hours.
But you can't secure it?
What would you read?
I don't want them having, um.
Birthday party during the day?
Yeah, you know, it causes all sorts of.
Explain to little kids why they can't be part of it.
Okay, gotcha. And the garage gets so much use during the day anyway.
Okay.
Be hard to.
Um, but uh, in the during the day, you have people. You know, watching space, yeah, uh, there, so um, after hours, if I rent, if I'm renting this, the garage.
Oh, we are having staffing.
Is that what the twenty dollar difference is, is for staff or?
Twenty dollar.
Between open hours and after hours.
No, that's just, that's just more, I mean, yeah, we have to have staff here, but um, that's, that's much more inconvenient.
Okay. Okay.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, yes, but I'm thinking you'd also, you wouldn't have one person here.
Would you wanna charge more than twenty dollars?
That's what I'm thinking, oh.
To cover that cost?
No, I was, I was fine with just having Nate here. In the past when we've done stuff.
If we're, if we're doing the gathering room and we have this closed door.
Yeah.
Fine, but if we're, we have the garage and the patio. And even actually, either uh, the patio here, um, just having one person here doesn't seem.
Something to think about.
Yeah, especially if you've got, if they're in the garage, they're in the library and you've got. You know, or forty people or something there, that's a lot of people kind of wandering around and. Kids going to the restroom and then wandering away.
It might be better just.
Starting at the laser.
You know, might just be better not to rent the garage, I mean, this is available, what would be the odds that somebody wants this? And somebody else wants the garage, you know?
At the same time.
Yeah.
And if you do that, then you have to limit to the ideal lab. Because the ideal lab's in the middle, that's right.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't looking at that, cuz they're.
Same thing, yeah.
Same thing.
The, the door system here was designed only for this use. After hours. To close the rest of the library and they could still access the bathrooms, that was the whole point of those doors.
Yeah, so I would think that ideal lab two should not be offered after hours. For that same reason, yeah, it was supposed to be the, the library is closed. But you can use the bathrooms and everything else, that was why this was put outside of the library.
It's, it's a much, yeah, the people behind the, 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 uh. Passing the doors is more of an issue than people this side of the.
My thought process, I, I put the garage on there cuz I think it is such a cute space, I can see kids wanting to have little parties in it. But I think the reality is, when I think about parent renting, they're going to most likely rent this. As opposed to the garage, it's just my thought, yeah.
And, but I could see it not being available and having, you know, that as, as option B, but, you know, I think.
I mean, I think the library could use it as an after hour space for programming, right?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Because I mean, have people here monitor that, same with the ideal lab, right?
Yes, you could have a program that's doing that. Yeah.
But not for rental. Yeah, and I think it also makes it easier to close down officially at the end of the night, whether you have one or two, but.
Yeah.
You can confirm that all people are gone quite easily in this particular space.
Yeah.
And actually doing it as programs, we'd gain some experience about what goes wrong. Um, there and, and, you know. Cuz I agree, I think it would be a good, the garage would be a great place to have a, you know.
Well, I agree.
Saturday, you know, at five to six or something, you know, that, five to seven or something.
Cuz what the garage has that this doesn't is the garage has tile flooring.
Yeah.
Anything that makes a mess, that's why it's that way, and same thing with the ideal lab. But maybe we hold off on that until we get to a point where we're renting out these rooms so much.
Yeah.
That, and people start asking about the others.
Yeah.
Have you had people ask about the garage or anything?
No.
Yeah, so maybe we wait until we start getting a lot of rentals or people start asking and then revisit.
And I have the staff for two, cuz right now I only have the staff for one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe on the availability list page, just show that those two rooms aren't available at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then that gives us.
So the ideal lab and garage?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For after, yeah.
For after hours, yeah.
Well, the garage is not at all.
Right, right, so we'll take that.
So the gathering place during open, uh, the gathering place patio during open hours or non-open hours. Why, why would we not want to?
Do they do it during open hours?
During hours.
Again, it's a distraction, I mean, if it, it could get confused for a library program, and if it's not a library program. It's, it's a, you know, kind of more like a private-ish event. And then more people would definitely lock up thinking it was a library program, and then that could cause all sorts of. Issues. Okay, so so far I've got, um, ideal lab will be not available after hours. Um, remove garage. Change resident to white lake residence. Um, adding the slash and the kitchen, I'll gather and place A and B, anything else?
So are the rates compared to what the current rate is? This is a little bit, little bit more.
Little bit more.
It was like.
A little more in line with what I've seen around.
It seems very reasonable.
I was thinking the same.
I think for what you're getting, and this does not include also, um, other places do rent. They include fees for the technology and other items.
Or extra cleanup fees.
Right, um, so it's, um, we are not charging for the technology.
But they can't come in that day and say, hey.
Right.
I've got a slideshow.
It's like, you better make sure that, and we can't guarantee, because we can't guarantee the staff person.
Doesn't, doesn't it say like a week ahead of time?
Yeah. Make sure that their stuff is working and that we've got what they need, you know, they've got something different for how that works.
So, do we want to revote on the meeting room? Or should we say we voted on it as presented or as amended?
The, the meeting room policy itself is, we pointed out, right, it's just the rates, the rate schedule. Talking about voting as amended.
No, it says right in there, you can do the garage after hours. And we already approved it. I guess, I, I'm not.
Yeah, no, it definitely did, I don't know where, but.
Yeah, it's on the third page.
Third one.
And then also with the next bullet down, that one.
Oh, right, right there, yeah.
See the reference to the garage? For the sake of the.
Oh.
Documentation.
And idea lab, both of them.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you have, we're glad.
Both bullets.
Yeah.
But you gotta keep idea lab, because you are offering that journey hours.
It's just not after.
Just wouldn't be for after.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's current, that currently does get granted.
That's exciting.
Okay, then, so then, motion to amend our earlier approval to remove the two references to the garage. If they will be your policy.
I'll second. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Right, we have no old business, we haven't done the meeting room rates yet.
We should have a motion for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So someone make a motion on the meeting room rates.
Also move.
Rich, and. Who wants to second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
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 We get a motion rose as, as I can do to the policy committee.
Okay. You mean, meeting room rates was added?
Meeting room rates.
That's what I mean, yeah. We have no old business, which would lead us to our favorite part of the evening.
Snacks?
Next, and who would like to make a motion to dismiss?
Since I came last, I'd like to first make the, the motion.
Okay.
Adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, at eight o'clock on the dot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Or yes. All right.